Good morning, everyone, and I hope you all had a wonderful, happy, happy holiday, a nice weekend and very nice weather and hope everybody could enjoy it. We are here today for our Jackson County Board of Supervisors meeting for Tuesday, May thirtieth of two thousand twenty-three. Don Schwenker and then Flago, myself, Mike Steinis, are your county supervisors. Mrs. Smith is our county auditor, the auditor here from IT, and Luanne, our executive assistant, is back here keeping an eye on us. And we have Mary here from the Senate Press. And first on our agenda this morning would be Bjorn, our Jackson County IP Director. Good morning.
Good morning. Have all this stuff yet or not?
Well, I've got the first one and I've got the second one, and there was a slight change and.
Okay, John was going, I thought he was gonna be on, but evidently he's not. Anyway. Thing I have is the cabling for the Law Enforcement Center for Data and coaxial TV cabling. We, John and I met with Jerry Brown with SCI Communications and went over all the drops to make sure we, we got everything in place. What SCI Communications is proposing is ten locate, ten locations for our wireless access points. Thirty-three locations will have dual data runs, so sixty-six drops there. And then six other locations with four runs of a specific area, so there'd be twenty-four drops there, approximately a hundred-ish drops for data and then twenty-four coaxial runs for TV within the facility. We did get an original quote from him, it was forty-five, six thousand, some change, I don't have that original one here now.
Oh, the original, if I remember right, we were a hundred and some.
So that included cameras and door access, and we found out that those runs were already included in the cameras and door access bits.
In the, in the.
Um, so we were able to take those out, this adds a rack in there to mount equipment in and fiber between the IT room and the mechanical room within the building. The reason they have to do that is it's over categories, five, six cable can run three hundred and thirty feet, I believe it is, before it loses its speed, so we are going to have to have them come from two different locations with the mechanical room in the facility and in the IT room. We'll connect those two via fiber, so everything will talk to each other. Um, let's see here. And then the coaxial is for TVs within the cells, you know, the offices that have monitors. We just did a dual run there, so let's say they have a a weather emergency and they want to put up, you know, the weather, the news radar, whatever it is, they can do it from their offices, the sheriff, shoot, that'd be it's in the plans of who all has it, and then also just the regular TV for the inmates back themselves, so. Um, couple of questions that John and I, John and I met Friday, a couple, one of the questions he had was the six E plenum data runs, he said, is that necessary? So what the plenum, plenum is, is it's fire-rated cable, if we'd run into having to put it into an HVAC duct or something like that, it needs to be a plenum cable. We could get away with it, as Jerry said, but the problem is if you run into an issue and the fire marshal catches it, he will make you pull it out and rerun it brand-new anyway.
So what is the difference?
It's only about, I did ask him that, it's about forty dollars per thousand feet, and there's approximately twenty-seven thousand feet in this building, so approximately a thousand dollars is all. So, in my opinion, it wasn't worth switching out to the regular non-plenum data cable. So in the end, his quote was for fifty, fifty-four thousand, five hundred and ninety-three dollars and ninety-three cents. Comes with a twenty-five-year warranty and warranty on that. I've worked with Jerry in this building on multiple occasions now. Been a great company to work with, they do really clean work. Just after I met with John, he is, he looked back, in two thousand twenty Delaware County spent just on the wiring, thirty-two thousand, one forty-seven. In two thousand twenty-one, Appinost County spent, or three thousand, twenty-two, so it went up about eleven thousand dollars from two thousand twenty to two thousand twenty-one. And now we're in two thousand twenty-three now, so of course.
Two years.
John did write a letter here, I handed out to everybody, recommending that we go with SCI, not to exceed this cost and that he feels that's competitive from his previous projects years past. The kicker in this is, for some reason, this looks not in the project estimate, so we don't have, I don't know where the money's coming from exactly.
So, uh, I guess.
I don't why this wasn't bid out originally.
Yeah, and I just wonder how many times that's gonna come in front of us, that it was not included. So. So I know, whatever you're saying here for drops and drops and this and that don't mean nothing.
Yeah, I figured.
The point is, if, as long as it's the place for what we need, if you throw it past the sheriff, I guess.
So, yes, Sheriff and the Sheriff and the Jail Administrator did it. And I sat down and went through the drawings and remarked where we thought they should be. We probably have it maybe potentially overkilled, but.
It's easier to run it now.
Right now, and if they want to move their desks in a certain spot, then we're covered.
Well, we know what it's gonna cost to move a box from here to there. So my other question is, our point of, would be, you know, the EOC Center, as far as the wiring and that, is some of that covered by our you're gonna have to check with Lynn Kelly, I mean, she had a three, four, or five-page list of things that were included in that grant.
Yeah, I think there's ten dual runs in there, so twenty, twenty runs, I don't know, we could probably have them break out that cost, I guess.
And it may be already broken out, because I know some of that was broke out really.
Could you, could you pull some of that, like, for your racking? If you got runs in there, you need racking to support it, so it could burn up the racking costs. You know, kind of thinking outside of the box a little bit.
Um, so the rack's gonna come back to actually in the IT room or the mechanical room.
Which I get that, but I'm saying, could part of that cost be
I mean, they had told us we had to be pretty, pretty careful about.
The EOC, you know.
Yeah, if it's good, I know where you're going.
I tell you, the bottom line of this is, you're gonna, we're gonna have to get that list that Kelly had, and it was, it was point by point, what was, okay. Yeah, so if some of that is included in that wiring, maybe we could do some of that anyway, so we can.
Right. Look into it and see what can you go.
As long as you talk to Sheriff and everyone else is okay.
Yep, yep, we met, I don't know French, got the final number, right? But we did meet on locations. We actually added a couple, and then, so in order to add some, um, they wanted us to delete a couple of locations, so we keep the conduit the same amount.
So we've just been joined by our sheriff, have you got any questions or concerns, Brett?
I just, yeah, I stepped in, Doran, I just wanted to catch this and see what.
Yep, so I just gave him the quote for the wiring, I don't know if you've got a final quote, Brett, or if I could do, but.
So basically, there's been about a nine-thousand-dollar adjustment made to it from the, well, the original, we knew we had some overlap, so that was a much better number when we got to forty-six, and now it's at fifty-four, so.
So, and how fast will they start with this, are they about that point right now, because I know they're running a lot of electrical and all that stuff.
No, so, well, I guess I can't say for sure. Walls would need to be studded up and all the conduit ran, things like that, so I think it's gonna be a little bit. But this quote is good for like ten days since if we accepted it, they'd at least get it ordered on hand and hold it for us until we're ready for them.
And his time.
He would work with John or Jeremy and get the timeframe of when they should come in.
I know he was really busy too on some other projects, so his, his time constraints allows for him to get this completed in a.
I would say, so I think new construction should go fairly quick for him compared to this building.
So, when you say that, do we have any kind of contract that says it's gotta be completed by something, such a date? I mean, we've run into this before, but I.
With these guys or?
Yeah.
I, we, unless John has something to write up, I don't have anything.
Um, I, I, I know we've talked with John, and I have talked with John, I talked to John the other day, and I talked with you, and I guess as far as going out for another bid, it was few and far between, and how comfortable would you be? And I asked him for comparables like you gave us, and that's logical compared to a percentage of for two, two, three years, I mean, I guess.
Yeah, and instead of they've done the wiring here, it's the same, same type of wiring, good company, comfortable with them, I guess.
Okay, Brett, do you have any concerns, comments?
No, I just, and I can get with Doran later to see if, kind of where we ended up with what we were trying to adjust and stuff, make sure that was all kind of how we.
Yeah, I met with John on Friday, and he thought that's not a problem, to delete those and then add it into the multipurpose room and then the booking area, there was one, I think.
Okay.
There was one on that forty-six thousand dollar quote, there was one area I missed, so that added a little bit too.
Yeah, okay, so we do, this, you can check with Lynn.
Yeah.
And see if some of that may be covered. As far as, I guess we, we're gonna need to approve it to get this ten-days window. If we're wanting to approve it, and as far as where the funds are coming from, I guess we've, what we allocated from the ARPA funds, I mean, we have some carryover there yet, but we don't know, we actually don't know where our bottom line is.
Was to approve the bids for SCI Communications for the amount of not to exceed fifty-four thousand, five ninety-three, ninety-three. They're controlling for the law better. And to work with Kelly and Lynn, just to see if some of that funding can come out of the, you know, see, you'll see, great.
On second.
Motion second to the SCI proposal, as presented, although the favor say I, I oppose nay, motion carried.
And the second thing I have here is just an MOU from OCIO, it's the Chief Information Officer, who's now in Department of Management. What this is, is monitoring, cybersecurity monitoring service called CrowdStrike. Currently, we use it in the auditor's office for elections, if they were under the test period throughout the state. What this is, is it just monitors our systems and looks for any malware, cyber attacks, things like that. This is a service that's free through the state until February twenty-twenty-five, I believe. February twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-five, I guess, so, and then effective as soon as we send the MOU. Pretty much. Uh, we currently have, do have a system called FireEye, it expires August first. Um, that is all through, also through the state. I haven't seen no issues, I think it's you'd be silly not to.
Well, I like, I like the free part of it, as long as at least you're satisfied with what's, what's happening here.
The MOU's don't even, no, it's, it's just on the computer monitoring and it goes out to the state. It's actually at Camp Dodge, which is a big cybersecurity place, and basically, the MOU saying we will participate in this. Um, if we remove a computer, we will uninstall it. They will contact us if they find any issues, and then we take care of the issue at that time, if they find anything. We have found a couple of small issues before with the FireEye, and they call you, I mean, I've been at home and they call me and say, you wanna isolate this computer, they will take that computer off our network until we determine if it is a legit attack. Thankfully, they have not been alleged attacks, but.
Okay, you have had instances where they.
Correct.
It worked.
So it's, yes, that was the old program, this is a supposedly better one. But I said in a webinar, they basically just wanted board approval and the chair to sign it, so that's why I brought it here today, and then I sent it and and get it installed on our computers.
Questions, concerns, go.
Make that motion, we want it. OCIO.
MOU for the OCIO.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry, dude.
Motion second to approve the agreement with the MOU with OCIO. As presented, all those in favor say aye, I oppose nay, motion carries. That's all, Bjorn. Uh, are there any visitors or citizens here today that would like to approach the board or have a concern? Seeing none? I see our human resource director just stepped out. I see she stepped back. Now, we're are you available?
I'm available.
So we are joined by Becky Chapin, our Human Resource Administrator, good morning.
Good morning. So I was on this morning for personnel action, there's actually no action I need specific to that, I was gonna introduce our new maintenance custodian to you. They got away from me, so we're trying to.
It seemed goodbye.
We'll try to get him in before I'm done here, so we will go on to the EMS coordinator position. I don't know if anybody has zoomed in, some of the associates, maybe they would zoom in here this morning at nine-twenty to talk about this. Um, so I, we have had a vacancy in our EMS coordinator position since last July. So I've met with the association over the last few months, most recently last week, and we all got together and hammered out a final version of the job description. So we're to the point where we hopefully need to approve the job description, set a salary for the position, and then start the public notice to search for a new coordinator, so we need to talk about that. Some of the things that I talked about with the association, obviously, were the requirements of the position. Um, everybody was in agreement as to what the position description needed to include. And it does include the board of supervisors as an indirect report, so that is the reason I'm going to ask you to approve the position description today, because you will be at the top or the bottom of the chain of command, whichever way you want to look at it. Um, so I want to talk about the description, if you have any questions about that. The association had made a recommendation of setting a salary for the position in order to seek for a coordinator, so we can go about that several ways. Um, and then, of course, to start advertising for the position. So the first thing is the position description, I emailed this out to the board last week. Um, if you had any questions, comments, input on the contents of what you're expecting out of this, we did use the shell of the original description that was established by the council at the time, which was the National Director, some of the agency members. And we expanded upon it from there, from that.
So, and what I read out of that, there's a large amount of expectations of this position, so, I mean, some of them may be overlapped that I can see. Uh, but, and maybe some of it is just formwork and whatnot, but it seems rather detailed of what expectations are, and am I, am I getting it right that so this individual will report to the EMS Association and they will report to us?
They will, so they had established a subcommittee or an executive committee that was going to be the officers of the association, so my understanding, those three of those. They will do the direct report to this person, and then together with the coordinator will present it to the board. They had talked about quarterly, depending on what direction you want to go with this and how often you want to hear from them, they will accommodate that. They were gonna do it on the same timeframe as what they would do state reporting, I think. And then they would represent as well as the coordinator, prior to, we would just have the coordinator come in. They understand the expectation is there to have those assurances as this position is doing.
And have we discussed, or have the association or you have discussed how we're gonna, where, will this person, individual have an office here?
We don't know that yet, one of, some of the things we have to work through with IT is to make sure that their system is on our server and they're like an independent laptop, like we had in the past, that way all the documents are retained. There's some logistics that's not gonna be worked there.
But we once more cited some accountability, I suppose, that's where we, that's where we ended up last time, and.
They will definitely need a physical phone where they're, if that's going to be here, and of course, each of the agencies need them to be able to function out of their facilities as well, so. I think the ideal goal would be to have, they want to be set so in the event there's a transition, they have everything they need again. I think there was some direct retention of records for independent agencies on the EMS coordinator, where they didn't necessarily have what they needed at their independent facilities to function and do reporting that they needed to do that, so those are some of the things they have to work through as they establish the position.
And you had good input from all of the agencies, is that correct?
Um, I, I didn't have a chance to reach out to you, I was hoping you'd jump in today, I don't believe Lamont was represented. Yeah. Um, but I, I, and Bellevue, I'm not sure, but every other agency was. Everybody had the opportunity to email back and forth, I don't think.
So is this based, I mean, I know the salary changed a little bit, and, and somebody might have a question about that, but uh, was it based on a forty-hour week basis type thing, or I know the person's gonna be on call and they have to be available in evenings for classes and training and whatnot, so.
Yeah, so our full-time is thirty hours, some work thirty, some work thirty-five, some work four, the expectation is the position works full-time. It might be sixty hours this week, it might be twenty hours. I did explain the whole benefit piece of that and how there has to be some sort of set, set schedule. Um, it's hard to determine where to go with that, starting somebody out, they may be able to start him at a forty-hour work rate, this, or this person at a forty-hour work week until and maybe a little more structure, but once they get into the trainings and the nights and the evening, it's gonna be very, it's gonna fluctuate.
Well, it could, it could still be a forty-hour work week, it just, they may not be in here from eight to four or whatever.
I just would like to see if there's a way that there would be a kind of a shared calendar or something, so it can kind of be viewed
Oh, sure.
where they're at, what they're doing versus just, I don't wanna say on the under system, but.
Well, I still think too, Don, there has to be some kind of accountability daily, you know, whether it be a report, whether it be a call-in or acknowledgement to someone. You know, I think we need to know, I mean, even for safety reasons, you know, I mean, we need to know where they're out there alone, per se, we don't know who this individual might be, and they're, you know, for safety reasons for the county too, and themselves, that, you know.
Just like with our, we have meetings, we have calendars, schedules, everything, everything's kind of, things can be projected out of, they're gonna be in Saint Ignatius this day. Preston on this day, that can be kind of scheduled, regimented, where you can just look on a calendar, kind of see a skeleton structure of what they're doing. Understanding it's gonna change, meetings are gonna pop up, they're gonna change, whatever. But we should be able to look and say, oh, they're here today, and then by chance we call or stop by, hey, they're actually there, type of thing. You know, because just saying Preston's, you know, we'll, we'll judge you, get your forty hours, they have no, no accountability for that, no, we, you know, we need a check and balance.
So we have other departments that report to you also when they're leaving, or reports to somebody, you should say. You know, and I think that still has to be involved somewhere that they get a reporter, let somebody know where you're at, you know, this for both sides. The only other thing I like to say is that we are very fortunate to have the volunteer services that we have in this county. And to get them some help that they need for their system standards, I mean, we have standards from the state that they have to apply by, and, and they're all volunteers. You know, and they're protecting us on their own time, on their, just, their birthday parties and whatnot, so.
Yeah, everybody was, everybody agreed on, everybody has about the same needs, but any, since we're within each of their agencies, obviously. So some of them may, some of them admit they may want to lean on him more for some of the paperwork, for the system standard, I did look at those, and it's quite in-depth. And as far as I understand it, that was never implemented. And that will be a huge step forward for them to be able to at least have those measures in place. And then all the other things will kind of follow.
So we also talked about whether he could, or he or she, I should say, person could respond for other services.
And they all agreed that if this person were to be in the area and here, that, that they would go, but depending on where this person lives or, you know.
They don't expect them.
They don't expect them to run, yeah.
To drive from Baldwin to Preston to try to make a call, type of thing, but.
And they all agree there would be no scheduling of this person to serve their agencies, but if they knew they were gonna be short, they could reach out and say, hey, heads up. If you could be, be a lawyer in the area, and they were all okay with that.
And I think that's something that you convey when we do interviews or whatever it may be, but, yeah, I don't know where you, how you set a salary for that, I don't know what you compare it to, I guess.
You know, and we didn't really have anything to compare to, there's only a couple in the state of Iowa, but they're not comparable to Jackson County with a number of agencies. Um, our last coordinator's salary was forty-nine, four sixty-eight, and that was fiscal year twenty-two. You know, they had requested a salary range of fifty-five to sixty-two, they wanted somebody that would be not entry-level paramedic-ish rate of pay to attract somebody. I don't know, you know, if, there is fifty thousand in the budget for the position next fiscal year. I don't know where that number came from, I wonder what the talk was about that then.
Well, you know, it's actually been quite a while ago, since we discussed that, you know, and since then, we've had percentages and, and whatnot. Moving forward, I guess, did we did we consider that enough, do we have enough conversation, but I don't know, but this is where we're at, I guess this is where we need to decide.
Um, I think you're gonna have to have arranged posted.
A lot of times at a traffic, you can do the met salary requirements, sometimes that injures people, sometimes you get people where a little part that you can't even consider, or do you waste their time, I don't know if those.
Sometimes they're, they just ask for the move.
Right.
You know.
Right.
Any other thoughts, concerns?
As I stated, I thought possibly that could be a little bit on the high range of the salary.
So what, do you have the range in there now?
They requested fifty-five to sixty-two.
Fifty-five to sixty-two, okay, so that forty-nine was last at what year, twenty-twenty?
Twenty-two, so if you would add three percent plus six percent, where would that put us?
Yeah, put it right in that range. Three would be fifteen hundred, and then six would be three thousand, ways like that, so you're, you're right at fifty-five, so. Even if you wanted to advertise from fifty-two to sixty-two, it doesn't, it's still whatever qualifications are coming forward.
I mean, because, yeah, I mean, you may end up getting a your candidate's only new paramedics or newer. You know, so.
That we've yet to see, but, yeah.
You know, we don't, we don't know what we're gonna get for the candidates, so I'd rather see, like you say, a fifty to fifty-eight or something like that, you know.
I think there was twelve applicants the last time they did this, don't quote me on that, but there was a good amount of response to it.
But that's been a while ago.
And two thousand four fifteen.
Yeah, and you know, that's like, your new paramedics could do an awesome job at the, if they got the you know, the computer knowledge and.
We talked, they'll do it all, they just hired a paramedic.
They talk, I don't know if they talk.
Can't remember that.
I make a motion to approve the EMS coordinator position at a salary range of fifty-two to fifty-eight.
Was that fifty-two or fifty-three?
Fifty-two.
Fifty-two, fifty.
I have a motion and a second to approve the EMS coordinator position moved forward with a salary range of fifty-two to fifty-eight thousand. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I oppose nay, motion carry.
And then I would ask for a motion to approve advertising for the coordinator position.
Motion second to approve the advertisement for their position, all of the papers say aye. All right, I oppose nay, motion carry.
And then the association was gonna determine who they wanted on their end, whether it would be their executive committee, or if they would do like one service or one transport, one non, one fire, and then one board person, myself, for interviews. So we don't want to create a forum or anything on the boards, but, so that'll be the plans, that'll be input here, and and if by chance the salary range is online, they can always come back to the board directly after that, and make a different request.
We can, man.
All right, we'll go with that.
Yeah.
All right. Robert, you wanna come on up? Quick minute of fame here, I didn't realize they were sitting back there. So this is Robert Kilbert from Bellevue, Iowa, he's our new maintenance custodian, he will be replacing Mike Reagan when he retires later this month, so he'll be training for the next couple of weeks before we set him free. So, Bob, Lynn Flago, Mike Steinis, Don Schwenker.
Speech again.
Yeah, good to see you, yeah, lovely board.
It's been an opportunity, guys.
And this is our county auditor, Elisa Smith, I don't know if you've made it through offices yet or not, so you can give an introduction.
Look forward to looking for you, I think. These ladies are rough, I'm just saying.
I hear that.
All right, Lisa. Ready for this?
This morning I need a motion to approve the May twenty-third, twenty twenty-three board proceeding. And written by our owner, Smith, unauthorized publication entered the newspapers. And written by our owner Smith, unauthorized publication in the newspapers.
I'll make that motion.
Motion in a second, I almost got it, I didn't have that second. Motion in a second to approve the minutes for the May twenty-third, twenty twenty-three board proceeding is written. All of the papers say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, motion carried.
And with Matt Speck coming last week and discussing the um, financing, the revolving loan fund between. Jackson County and the Jackson County Fair Association, he has submitted back down to us a transfer agreement, so if you. Um, if you're okay with everything with that, I need a motion to approve and authorize the chair and auditor signature. On the transfer agreement between Jack- Jackson County, Iowa and ECI Business Growth Inc. For a sixty-one thousand, seven hundred and ninety-two thousand revolving loan to the Jackson County Fair Association to assist for campground improvements.
And these are the exact numbers we talked about last week or approved last week.
Correct, and I did have him add in the interest rate and.
Yes, thank you.
The original did not have it, I want to be very clear.
Catch, I went right over top of that, we talked about it and we approved it.
Just on your end, because they also had a percentage they were paying.
That nine thousand dollars, ten percent of the project they were.
I didn't, I figured that wasn't really between us, it was between.
Them, okay, I just need to make sure you didn't need it for your audit side.
Well, I mean, you're approving, this is what you're approving, is this sixty-one thousand dollar loan. So we don't know what else is happening outside of, as an example, we have in other times taken mortgages on houses and and we've taken life insurance policies and things like that. But what Jackson County is concerned with is how much is the loan.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure you were covered on your, yeah.
So was that collateral or that, was that what you're talking, rather than like?
You know, we've, they've been creative.
Yeah.
Various loans.
Kind of collateral maybe, rather than a ten percent, yeah.
I think it's kind of a guarantee, isn't it more like a personal guarantee?
Yeah, could be.
Yeah, yeah, but two percent is, yes.
There's, it's a little different, who's the guarantee? We actually own the.
Exactly, well, yeah.
I'll second that. I have a motion in a second to approve the unauthorized chair signature for the transfer agreement as presented, all of the papers say aye. Aye, opposed, nay, motion carried.
And that's all that I have until the ten o'clock budget hearing.
Okay. We will move right along, hello, Ann. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm ready, calendar this week, tomorrow, Wednesday, May thirty-first at nine AM is an Irish meeting for Min. Um, in Dubuque or by Zoom. At ten AM is the McCokey River Water Trail Ribbon Cutting Ceremony in Canton, for any of you that want to attend that. At noon, um, is the Dyersville River Town of the Year Celebration start in Dyersville, also for any of you. And at six o'clock tomorrow night is the E nine-one-one Service Board Special Meeting. Um, in the supervisor's office or by Zoom for Mike and Min. Thursday, June first, at ten thirty AM is the Jones County Relay Intercropping Field Day. Um, for any of you that want to attend that, and eleven o'clock is a tag meeting by Zoom for Don. Monday, June fifth, at nine AM, um, is the Destination Iowa Update, I'm downstairs in the community room for any and all of you that wanna go to that. Our next regular meeting will be Tuesday, June sixth, at nine AM. And that afternoon at three o'clock will be a green space redevelopment meeting at the McCokey Library or by Zoom. For any of you that wants to go to that, I think Min's been going to that lately, so. You know, the other piece of business I have today is expansion, possible action on a fireworks permit for Brian Peterson. For the fourth of July, he has it in your packets. I'm looking for a motion to approve that, if I'm okay with you.
Any questions, concerns? I mean, we've discussed this, we've had a work session and basically we've. Uh, come to the conclusion that we really can't deny, we appreciate them applying for the permit, so we know. You know, law enforcement knows, AMS services know, unaware of it, and uh, there's changes to come, that's all I'll say. Move to approve.
Second.
A motion second to approve the fireworks permit for Brian Peterson as presented, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, nay, motion carried.
Alright, so ahead, thank you.
Okay. Um, at this time, we'll take a three three cents. We will reconvene at this time, and we're joined by Lori Rowley, our um, zoning administrator, and Ruth Aldrich. Her, his, her assistant. Good morning, ladies.
Morning, Mike.
So, uh, wherever you'd like to start, you have, uh, do we have discussion, possible action on several different items in your, on your agenda, so.
Do, let's, let's go ahead and start with the, um. The nuisance that we talked about on, in Iron Hill. And I think we have pictures of that, we had a complaint come in from a person that lives down that road and travels. East seventeen hundred and fifty street daily and during their commute to work. And this is a property, Mike, you probably have more history on this.
I, I do have some history on that, and and just the input that I think several of these pictures are old pictures from what I can relate to. Uh, three years ago when we had a complaint, and if I remember right, even further to the northeast, I wanna call it. There's another road that had a couple abandoned vehicles there, and I believe at that time, they were cleaned up pretty well. I mean, he addressed the situation, or they addressed whoever it was, and the, and the garbage in the trucks and that were full of garbage and stuff in front of the house were all cleaned up. Well, I have not been by there lately, but I, I, to me, when we had the complaint back three years ago, I think it was three years ago. It was pretty much taken care of, so.
Okay, so.
I also feel that some of these items that are here are farm related, uh, looks to be a farmstead.
We did, for contrast, do the two thousand twenty-two aerials and the two thousand, what do we do, nineteen? Just to kind of show the difference and how some of the things that are still, that were in nineteen are still in twenty-three. Like these right here are still there, and I believe some of these are still, still there. So, you can see there's a clair, cluster of three, and then go ahead and scroll back up.
What is that cluster of three of? That's really hard to tell in this picture.
Um, like. It's, oh, it is a truck of some sort, and then I think, um, other trucks. Um, I did not enter the property, my pictures are on here too to follow, that are, that are all from the road. So if you wanna show what the pictures we have from the road, you can see trailers, I'm not sure how much of them are used, being used and not. Um, and then I did look at old pictures, the, the topper was there back. From the pictures from the original violation, the railroad ties or whatever, those salvage wood pieces are still there. Um, yeah. Just a bunch of assorted scrap garbage metal and even go up again. Pretty much the same picture, and then that car looks like it's been sitting there for a very long time. And I could also see it in the original violations back in two thousand, whatever year that was. Uh, what time was it? Twenty, was it twenty, nineteen? So. But yeah, there is. Appliances and different things there, uh, and the, the complaint, the complaint expressed his concern since this is part of a. Right like scenic byway, and that people do travel through our county, and this isn't a good representation of. Of, of the scenic byway in our county. That's an, an abandoned car there on the northwest side of the property that was really close to those, uh, uh, horse trailers. And that's just another view of the same.
A lot of these, no offense, but from the farming side, I would not be alarmed. By a majority of persons.
Good, I just, I don't, if you guys don't wanna make a decision today, I'd really like for you guys to take a drive past this.
I did.
And, oh, you did already?
Yep.
Okay, okay, so even, okay, so even after seeing them, you're still, okay?
Yes, there is some things that need, I'm not saying there isn't, some things that maybe needs cleaned up.
Sure.
So.
But.
What do you do if, if you file with this complaint? Do you pick out specific items that need to be removed or cleaned up, or what do you, what do you do with it?
What we've done in the past, and we've kind of learned from that first group of, um, that we did in Leisure Lake, we're gonna list certain things. And then us, and to that add, including. Uh, so haven't we, was that including, but not limited to. So that was our, we, we hit some of the big things and then including, but not limited to. And then attach a copy of our, of our news nuisance ordinance to, to it, that kind of spells out what the.
Do we know if somebody's living in the, uh, home?
I don't know that for a fact, I would assume that.
Is that a new picture there? That's an old picture.
No, that should be a new picture, I don't think we put anything old in it. No, uh, those are all the new pictures that should.
One thing I don't want these to turn into, when I hear included but not limited to, that's a subjective, open-ended thing.
And we can discuss it.
And what, when I get pulled over by the cops, if I get pulled over by the cops and I say, why are you pulling me over? Well, you could have been speeding, but we're not gonna limit it to just that, you know, I don't wanna hear that, that's not gonna stand up in any court of law. And if you give a complaint where you have done these things, but it could be some other stuff.
Right.
I think you need to spell it out.
Okay, and we, I ch- talked this over with John, and he was our county attorney, and he was good with us doing that. Cause we can't walk on there and inventory all hundred and fifty items that are part of the nuisance. You know, the pie, the, the bag of Bud Light cans, the bag of this, the, it's, and we had one in Lea, excuse me, Green Island too recently. There's no way we could have itemized everything that was part of that nuisance. And.
I, I mean, you look at this picture, I'm, I'm gonna go along with them, the, the gates and the trailers and certainly.
I don't care if they haven't moved in a year.
Yeah, certainly can be part of, that certainly can be part of the operation, yeah.
If, if it is part of the operation, this is like a, oh gosh, not even a three acre tract of land.
But that doesn't mean they don't trip, do other things, he could haul cattle for the neighbors, he could be, you know, I, just because he only owns. My house only sits on three acres.
I know, I know farmers that they have like eight trailers lined up.
Mm-hmm.
What's this trailer for? When I home my lamb, what's this trailer for? When I decide to go fishing, what's this trailer for? I mean, it's very specific why they have every trailer they got, and they sit in a line, and they use it for that one thing. And half the time they're over there making a new trailer because they have this new thing they wanna try and do, and. And, and it, it's just one of those things where, you know, if there's a bunch of trash, everything laying around, it's refused, and weeds are all grown up, yeah. Trailers lined up on their side of the bend.
That was just one of the things I took a picture of, I mean, just to, for perspective, but at the same time, we can go at this anywhere you want. We can not do anything at all, we can, you know, look to see if those are actually abandoned, if we get contact with the property owner. Whatever you guys deem fair and necessary, and, yeah, we have a lot of stuff out there in the county. Um, and this was a complaint, we, I was hoping he wouldn't put it in writing, but he did.
Well, certainly to follow up, when we filed the complaint, we need to follow up with it, so let's do this, um. Let's, I mean, at, at this point, I, I suggest that we don't, don't do anything until we can take a better look, I mean, I've been through these before.
Mm-hmm, I know.
And a lot of times, if we talk to the owner a little bit, all of a sudden, you know, it's cleaned up and it's gone. You know, with, without a lot of further. Hard work and. Doesn't, isn't that, so, that's what I would suggest.
If you read on the complaint, it said, trailers or wagons parked next to the road are potential hazard for passing vehicles.
Um.
Uh, if there's nothing in the right way.
Not in this, not at this time, but there, it, it does happen according to the complaint, you could drive to that road every day.
On the first time, again, I wanna say, if, if I could see further, I think it's the same property. If you go a little farther northeast, there's a road that goes to your right, a county road, and there was two abandoned vehicles in the ditch. That they sensed that had moved.
I think those are covered with a tarp, if I'm not mistaken.
There is one there with a tarp too, yes, I saw that, but that's not this property.
That might have.
That is not this property.
Yeah, if that is there, I mean, that should not be in the road right of way. Where, what I observed, when I looked at this property, there wasn't.
There wasn't.
Anything sitting in the road right of way, you know? Is there some stuff out in front of the house that maybe could be picked up a little bit? Yes. You know, but there's also useful stuff out there, I see dog kennels, I see a gas jug, you know.
Well, when you use that in the complaint, there was things parked in the right of way. Take my word for it, does not hold up in a court of law.
Oh, absolutely, and that.
Take me a, take, take a picture of it.
Right.
Holds up in the court of law, well, trust me, I drive by it every day, I see it.
But that's his complaint, that isn't how we would address the property owner. Yeah, just cause that's his complaint isn't how it would be addressed.
I, I would like a little more time to, uh, view, view it myself, that's what I.
Okay. Works for me.
And I believe we're at, if we can hold off for this, our time, we are at ten o'clock, and we have a bu- public hearing scheduled for. Uh, fiscal twenty twenty-three budget amendment, so I will open the public hearing. At this time, has anyone received any? Input from concerned citizens and or individuals? Does Kelly or Lisa want to go over that at all?
I'm here, if you have any question.
Um.
Maybe just a brief explanation?
With a student.
Um, maybe just one chair would be enough. Thanks, Ruth.
Um. So, we're moving, um, the health, we're increasing the health department insurance. Um, I believe that it's with, oh, that's, that's Elizabeth, um, it went from single to, uh. Um, family, I think, is the reason, um, increasing her registrations and water sampling projects and stuff. Um, increasing the amount of the drug grant dollars that we're spending this fiscal year. Trying to use leftover, um. Leftover dollars from the last fiscal year, copies of this, yes. I was thinking I'd give it to you, but you probably got, had a very. And, um. Uh, secondary road rock, they wanted to increase that by two hundred and fifty thousand. Um, when we did the mental health budget last year. We were assuming that the state was moving the mental health expenses from Fund Ten to Fund One. And they made us, um, create a separate fund for mental health, under the general fund. When I. Moved those figures from the general to the mental health, the new mental health fund. I forgot to move the, the health insurance from the supervisors departments to the mental health fund, or the mental health department. Because supervisors are paying for all general basic employees' health insurance out of their department. And because we moved it to the gen- to the mental health department, and we're getting reimbursed by the region for those costs. It should be coming out of the mental health departments, um, budget. So that's why that's there.
So, when secondary roads increases their budget by two hundred and fifty thousand, where did that go from?
From their fund balance. Yeah.
They're just moving money from one area, one account to another.
They're doing this before end of fiscal year, is that correct, is that?
Um. We increased the lo- lawsuit liability insurance deductible. And we increased the builder's risk insurance for the, the law enforcement.
Good.
That was not much of it.
Did we figure out if, uh, the fairgrounds are, are we gonna have to get it for the extension builder?
At the beginning of May, when I approved, when I, I asked for approval of the bills for the Together We Build. I, I send, I, I physically take over the documentation to the Coker State Bank for Dean Engel. And then I emailed Rick Puhl to let him know that I had done that. And I said, by the way. Do you have builder's risks since now you're getting the models? His reply was, good question. And that's all that I heard. So I don't know if we have insurance for that.
I had heard at one point they were looking into that.
I have quotes.
I have quotes. They had talked to.
Jennifer.
Jennifer, um.
I have quotes, but nobody's directed me that.
I think that came from Dean, I think we were in talks with Jennifer. I know they said they had talked to her and they were getting all the information.
I have quotes, you know, but that's, I mean, whatever, I haven't been told that we have it. I haven't been told that we don't.
Yeah, we'll follow up with that. I think we need to, hopefully.
We clearly wanna be covered, but right now, let's do our budget amendment and we'll discuss that.
Mostly close book carries.
Have motion second to go to public hearing, all those in favor? Aye. Oppose? Motion carried.
With that being said, then I need a motion to approve resolution number nine sixty dash zero five dash thirty dash twenty twenty-three. For the amendment to the county budget, to the amendment to the county budget for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. And authorize the chair and auditor signatures on the record of hearing and certified to the state of Iowa.
Second, motion second proof resolution nine sixty dash zero five dash three zero dash twenty twenty-three. As presented and with the chair signature, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed nay, motion carried.
That is all that I have for my point today.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Shelley. Okay, so we're back to Lori and Ruth, Ruth left here.
She left, um, an email came in with some final documents for one of the, um. Things on our agenda here, so let's not be sunset rich right this minute, so, um. So we finished up, it sounds like, on the Iron Hill complaint.
Can I ask that the board members, um, actively take a look at it and so we can talk about it?
And the car out front, I, I believe that's, I don't believe that moves. I believe it's, um, would fall underneath.
Well, this one or the one down the road that has the.
That was, the one down the road was not a complaint. Um, unless you wanna make it a complaint, um, I'm not, that was not part of this complaint. The property at, on, uh, on E seventeen was the complaint. There's a black Chevy. Monte Carlo or something like that sitting there, which I don't believe moved since the pictures were taken in.
Okay, so let's, again, let's take a look at it and we'll discuss it then.
Great. So, do you guys wanna talk about any of the three up in Leisure Lake right now or do the wind more time?
Uh, doesn't matter to me, wherever you wanna go.
All right, so let's do the wind. So, um. I have given you an updated copy of the resolution. Uh, we had made some last minute changes. Just before the, the board meeting, um, just basically cleaning up some of the language and, um. Made sure that, uh, the, the wind study towers, the met towers were not part of this man. And then we also made sure we added utility scale on here so not to limit. A farmer or some other rural property owner that was putting up a personal use, um, small scale. Tower in their, in their backyard. So basically, what this is doing is buying us some time, buying us nine months to. Not accept any applications for utility scale wind energy conversion systems. Um, it gives us time to do public input sessions. It gives us time to see where it looks like our comprehensive plan is going to take us and. And after that, you know, what, what our ordinance is going to look like. So, we can't really develop an ordinance here. We can get copies of whoever's ordinances we want. But what do we want our ordinance to say? What do we want our ordinance to do? It might not be what Delaware or Clinton's doing and it might not be what Buchanan and Benton's doing either. They basically locked it down. There's no, no development there. Um, so I think after our public input sessions, we'll have a good place.
I, I guess Lori, I, I read it and I read it again. I guess my question is, what are we gaining by putting a moratorium on it? Do we not have the authority right now to say no?
That is my understanding.
If somebody comes and files a permit like they should, like which required, we still have the ability to say no.
I, that's a question, I, if you want a better answer from John, my, my understanding was no.
My, that we do not, we issued a permit, so we don't have to issue that permit.
We could deny it.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
So we still have the authority to stop them. My point was, my only point is, and I don't know this, and I, and I don't, I don't, I'm not familiar with moratoriums.
Right.
So my point is, to me, putting a nine month moratorium on something means absolutely not for nine months. To me, that's a negative message to someone to say, we're not even gonna listen to you.
I don't know, um.
That's just my own opinion.
Think of the bigger companies understand this. And that they, that any company is gonna know, it's like, they just don't wanna get caught behind the eight ball, us being caught behind the eight ball. And it's, you guys kind of mentioned, this is the direction you wanted to go and that's why we've been working on this moratorium.
Well, we've been talk, we talked about it and, and, and we haven't talked about it, but we talked about it in our last meeting and Don mentioned it. And of course, as I'm thinking. If we have the authority to say no to a permit and somebody comes in like they did and put this up. Then to me, we should say the penalty or the recourse for us is severe. You take it down, you pay us five grand because that, you, we, you didn't.
Does it say that in the rules that?
That's what I'm saying, but.
It's not there.
It's easier to stop it than to invent something we don't have it.
This moratorium not gonna stop it.
Only for wind, unless you want us.
This moratorium not gonna stop it, ain't different what they did before.
Well, I, I, I know I don't, you, we don't agree, but I, I, I wanna believe that was an isolated. Case due to an employee that's no longer working there. Um, and it, it affected that project, which were included with Clinton, it was one project, but.
And, and I'm not saying I don't agree with you. My point is, what are we gaining? What, what are we gaining? To me, it sends a negative message to individuals that say, I don't wanna affect our chance. Or revenue, I should say.
Right.
Uh, that, uh, potentially a lot of revenue.
Right.
That could come forward, they say, well, they're not even gonna listen to us for nine months, we'll go somewhere else.
But they are still allowed to do the wind studies, but I don't know with that. With, um, the company that's doing the wind study currently, if they share their data, I don't know if it's proprietary to them. But if they're sharing their data, that would open up, um, room for someone else to come in.
If I did a study, I wouldn't show, share any data unless.
You, I know you were talking Iowa City, are you progressing?
We need to do, what do you guys want our ordinance to look like? That's the deal here. I have all kinds of samples we could draw from.
Okay, but we haven't, one, we haven't even, I guess, I myself haven't seen, you know, we kinda asked you to reach out to these others.
Oh, I have.
But I haven't seen the result of what them have said, you know, I don't. But again, I don't a hundred percent know what we can say, you know? And we don't know what our public wants yet.
That's why I don't think we're ready to start looking at draft ordinances, cause we don't know what our public wants.
So this is where I'm at. I, I think, I, it was my idea for the moratorium. I like it, but I wanted to have a sunset, so if there's an opportunity we wanna take advantage of. We need to be able to take advantage of. If we need to sit down and have a work study, session where you say, okay, these are the sample ordinances we got from Delaware. We're good, wherever, and this is what they're recommending this for, and I, I don't know falls zone, I don't know how all this works, so.
Right.
You know, I don't wanna duplicate and duplicate work.
Right.
That you've already kinda gathered. Right, you know, so we need to sit down, so if you're just waiting for us arbitrarily to say, I wanna fall zone this big, I want it this far away from the buildings. Where's that, I, we got no.
Some of that's generic and yeah, we can put that together.
Yeah.
But as far as, do you wanna limit it so far from, from towns? Do you wanna limit it? Do you wanna cushion between, um, highways? Cause that was one of your guys' concerns, like. Oh, we don't want people driving down the highway, and that's how we see is all these wind turbines.
Well, and it was just brought up. I don't know necessarily that it was a huge concern, but that was. You know, something that was brought up. Do we wanna do that? We don't know.
Right.
We haven't, one, had a work session to discuss. Maybe that's just my thought and these two could.
Yeah.
Give a care of.
And I'm concerned if we approve the moratorium, it, it twilights in nine months. And we pound out an ordinance in two months and we're good with it, we can rescind the moratorium.
Certainly.
A- a- and go from there. But right now, we're open. To.
We're wide open and I, just talking to John, I'm not sure what our authority would be to deny it. What, what we were denying it under, what grounds?
They have to get a permit to put it up.
Well, they gotta permit, they're asking. And how do you deny a permit?
How do you deny a permit without cause? Just say no.
Yeah. Because we don't have enough information yet.
Well, that's why we wanna do this.
Okay, so are we going to gather more information from the twenty-seventh meeting with the company? Who does this? Are, are we gonna get a better?
Yes.
Insight of, okay, so can we wait till then or, or do we wanna just do, I would. Even, even and or, I'd rather see six months than nine. I, I don't know, just because it sounds like we're putting it, pushing it off.
Yeah, it might, and the reason I'm looking at the nine months is we don't start our comprehensive plan until July first. And where is that gonna drive?
Which is a month.
Right, so where is that gonna drive us? Um, how much time do we need to just lay some of the groundwork? Are we looking at making this an A favorable county to where we don't want any development within certain areas? Are you looking to?
Well, this is where I'm gonna ask you on the comp plan because I'm from there, I help, I appointed the committee that did what Coker does come. And is the committee for the county comp plan been appointed?
No.
So that means we, I'm assuming, would have to come up with ten to fifteen people and ask them to do it. And then start the process. So a comp plan for me doesn't actually materialize, materialize. To give us guidance on what we need to do with wind denser and hog lots and all that stuff for a minimum of two years. I'm not waiting two years for something like this. We need an ordinance now.
Right, and the thing is that we kinda have guidance from it if we look.
You can't have guidance from something when there's literally nobody on the comp plan right now to give guidance.
That's right.
So, to me, they're separate, we can't.
So, we are taking the lead of ECIA for the comp plan. I mean, they're gonna put this together and then we'll decide.
The first thing they're gonna do, and this is from my experience, because they looked at me, the mayor, at that time and said. Appoint ten to fifteen people from around the community to form the committee to write the comp plan. So I'm assuming that will be us, people from all over Jackson County, that will start to, that will serve on that. That's the process I knew.
How about I reach out to Laura this afternoon and she's gonna be the one guy for, working for ECIA on the comp plan. Her and, um, Dan Fox.
Yeah, Dan Fox did the LaCoca, the one, and that was the first step, is we had to appoint people to the comp plan board. Then they went out and formulated how, where do we want subdivisions, where do we want this, how do we like that? And it was a very lengthy process, it was a two year process. So, we can't wait on the so, uh, wind ordinance.
Right.
If.
To see what that.
Yeah, we, we need to act sooner.
Yeah. So how about I reach out to Laura this afternoon and ask her, I could bring this to you at the next meeting. If you would, uh, if she would recommend that we start appointing a committee now, so we have a committee in place July first. Instead of waiting till August first or whenever to get a committee appointed.
Okay, so now you're talking strictly about the comp. Right now, we are talking about windmill moratoriums. Well, if you keep talking about the comp plan giving guidance on your bits.
Let's not get off track here. Let's just get back to our moratorium business. We will talk about the comp plan and going forward, how we're gonna move forward with that. So we've discussed, uh, the moratorium issue, uh, we have a resolution here that does not have a number, is that correct?
It does, it should be six ninety-two, or, excuse me, nine sixty-two. And the cap, look at the one that I sent gave you, not the one that you got earlier today. This is the updated draft that I handed out to you when I walked in, it's stamped copy and stamped in blue.
So, would you please point out, I didn't have time since you walked in, is, is there differences in the one that I read online with the changes?
Um, the major difference is it is cleaning up some of the language and making it, um, more understandable in this. And the third paragraph, uh, it cleaned up, um. Um, the impacts and potentials, um, impact tourism. And we inserted, um, utility scale when injured, use, utility scale. Into, um, the fourth paragraph. So that we knew we were looking at strictly utility scale, um, wind, wind turbines. And not peripheral, yes.
If it would make you comfortable, Mike, I'm okay with waiting till after the twenty-seventh. Talk to the wind people if you want, but honestly, I think they give us a, a little bit more of a level head. If we have, I don't know how soon people will come to look and check into windmills and rebuild, but.
I don't either, I guess. I don't know what this study's gonna bring, if this study brings something soon, something later, I, I have no idea, I've never dealt with.
And it looks like they're expanding their study area. So that's one of the things he's gonna.
So, you still.
He'll let us know on the twenty-sixth, or twenty-seventh, I have no idea.
I have no idea what this company kinda information they can give us, I guess, that would make me. Feel better or.
Well, beans is resolution, it can be approved and rescinded in a single vote. So.
So you feel good with the nine months or?
I mean, I'm okay with that as long as we can resend it sooner if, you know, we need to, because one, that's gonna get us. For the winter, I mean, probably.
So wishes to the board.
I'll second that.
And a motion of second proof resolution nine six two dash zero five dash three zero dash twenty twenty-three. Uh, for the wind moratorium as presented, all those in favor say aye. Oppose nay? Nay.
And before we get to, to something, we're, since it's on the same subject, um. Would you like me to start scheduling and setting up public input and information sessions? It might work out if we did one on the same day that, um, representatives from next area is going to be here. I could get with them, make sure that their schedule accommodate an afternoon meeting for public. To attend to gather additional information.
About.
Wind, wind energy coming into our county.
You want public information? The public can give.
Absolutely, but I want work sessions so we can find out an ordinance.
We can do that too.
You know, I would like to see and, and compare the order and kinda come up with one that we can, that we can get on the book.
Do we have to have an evening for, for a lot of people?
For public, I would think you'd have to have an evening meeting, yes, but as far as our ordinance, no, we need to.
Right.
Schedule working on that here or whatever.
So do you wanna do that before or after, um, the twenty-seventh, when they have their meeting here?
Uh, to me, there, it's apples and oranges.
Okay, so we can, we can start it. So you guys just set the meeting, uh, whatever day we wanna do a, a work session, we'll.
Well, our work session kinda depends on, you got your information available, I mean, your sample ordinances. You talked to the lady from Iowa City.
I have.
Um, compile all that and kinda, when you're ready to go, I would love to.
Okay, so.
See if we can figure something out.
Let's not put it on next week's. Let's not put it on next week's calendar, but. So we'll see maybe the week after.
Okay.
You guys want another Tuesday, right?
Yes.
After, okay.
Um. So. If we go like, I wanna wanna hold Troy up there all day. He might have something to do.
Okay, so yeah, we were just waiting for something from Troy's attorney. And uh it came after we walked out of the office, so that's what Ruth was doing for us. So, um, he just cleaned up a little bit of language for us that I had a little concern about, and. Um. I'm sure he got her covered.
So do you want to briefly? Go over that?
Yep.
Is escrow in place?
Yeah.
Uh, there was no signatures on the one that I've seen.
Very hard.
That's the uh.
You guys got the copies. I have the original. Um, with the signed copies, signed signatures. The same thing we have here. I'll need this back.
The escrow, talking about the escrow. Oh, okay, yeah, I didn't see that.
All right, seventy four thousand forty five dollars and forty cents. So what we did here? Um, with recommendation, from a recommendation of of Troy and his attorney. Instead of doing our bonding, um, at. During the bonding, we made a. We adjusted the standards. Um, to section six dash one twenty four of the county board of. Code of Ordances. And waived the surety bond, and in its place allowed for escrow funds that have already been secured. And the amount of seventy four thousand and forty five dollars and forty cents. Which what that guarantees is the two wells will be installed. There's two wells that are not installed yet. So that guarantees that those will be installed. And the piping will be installed, and then there's also um, a little bit of seating, well, there's seating, so so fences. But has not been spelled, so. It covers that, and there's a ten percent contingency, contingency added. To to the figures to come up with the seventy four dollars and forty cents. Um, so basically, the road, the roads are in. Already. They, the the private road, and then on number four, uh of what I sent you or hand you this morning, it's probably the same thing you got from Friday. It, um. Excuse me, number three. It's, it's basically saying that three hundred and twenty six street will remain private access, and that Jackson County accepts no responsibility. Ownership. Or maintenance for the street either now or in the future. So that gives us that. And then it. Uh, also talks about the fence, uh, excuse me, the agricultural. This is ag, it will remain ag. And that you might have. Ag around you. So reminder of that. And um. But anyway. They have mental requirements of. Except for the things that we worked on.
And as I read, yes, also, he had an archaeological study done, right?
He certainly did.
Thank you very much. And I've got a list of the expenses that were listed, and I can't see an issue with. The bonding uh regarding the escrow, as long as the, I mean, it's required that the money's there in escrow, so it's gotta be there, so.
Which's there.
I did uh view the property myself this morning. And. It is, as you have said, the lane is in, and uh I viewed it a couple different times in the last couple weeks, but. I don't, I don't have any issues, there's anyone else had received any calls or? Concerns? Uh, would you like to input anything, Troy, or? Sit there quietly?
He's just glad he has this behind him.
Just wanna get it under the belt.
Any concerns from the board? If not, I would ask for a motion to approve the subset rid subdivision final plat as presented.
Would you approve?
I'll second that.
A motion of second to approve the stunt service subdivision final plat as presented, although the favor say aye. Aye, opposed, nay? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Good.
The board.
Um. I need to get your check.
Yeah, and let's, let's one more, give me a couple minutes, thank you. Okay. So. Um, Hartman. From, he had asked for an extension. He'd sent you guys an email, that should be part of your packet.
I don't remember which one was it, was this?
Um, Hartman was the guy with the building materials, he.
The son?
No, that was for you.
Good.
So Hartman's the guy that's um.
Basically using this parcel to fix up, to store all your stuff, to fix up another.
Correct. So what type of time limit were you guys? And then you guys have been out there? Okay, those, yeah, those are pictures of that, and you can see there's a few other things that weren't really building material for the. For the project, so there was a little bit of some other things that could probably use some attention. Um.
Okay, so here's my thought, and I don't wanna take up a lot of time, but again. It's one of these processes, we knew there was gonna be issues, and we knew there were gonna be extensions, I think we already set a precedence. With one owner that we extended it. And if I see improvement is a positive to me.
Okay.
If I don't see improvement. That's a negative.
Right.
So I mean, I I don't know how you wanna proceed with it, if for its time limits. Uh, is it on a case by case basis, or are we setting a precedence by? You know, whatever their um. Proposal was when they, when they ended, they're asking for the extension, I suppose.
I would hope it be a case by case basis. Because not everything's.
Well, you're right, yeah, I I I agree, and I'd like to see. Like I said, if I see improvement, it makes a difference to me, but that's.
So. Help me. Familiarize myself. Well, let's say we say no, there's no extension.
Okay.
What's next? There was their time.
They, we have to um do court action.
So they file municipal infraction.
We would.
What's what's the fee?
Um, we would have to file that, and I'm not sure what the fee is. Um, although the fines would be um up to, well, seven hundred and fifty dollars a day. Per, per cause, and then up to a thousand dollars over day. For every day remaining violation.
Right. Because I hope you said, you say there's forty or fifty or remaining properties out there.
Wees, well, there's more than that, but their first round was forty two. Forty two.
Okay.
Um.
So I hope we don't have to go to four to two of these, asking for extensions or any sort of stuff.
We won't. Um, there might be a few, um, there's some, some that were cleaned up even before the notice got served too long. And then there's others that we've um. Have have call this and said it's been remedied, so we do know that there's some, and actually, there's some that. Are probably on our list for round two. That are already cleaned up, and we won't be sending the notices. So um, we're, we're seeing, we're seeing people. Take action. Um, actually, we were so busy last week, we did not make it up to Leisure Lake at all. It was the previous week that I was out. So I have not verified.
So in his rec, in his request here, it says he'd be happy to meet with. With you out there, with, you know, and figure out a plan.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, is that something you're willing to do?
I was, and Don, this is the guy that you were gonna talk, call and talk to?
Yeah, I didn't get a chance to.
Okay.
I picked weekend.
Okay, so if you wanna table it again, until um you guys can get out there, or I can come back with a report. And.
It it said there's work in progress, so have you seen work in progress, or you have not had a chance?
I have not.
Okay, so we definitely need to table this until we have seen what's going on.
Okay.
So. So it's on the table yet, so far, so we never took it off the table, right?
Okay.
So we can just.
So still there.
Move on.
Okay, and then um. Francis Marshall. He is one of the people, and you have an email there, that's from his um granddaughter's email address. He, um, and then also I gave you guys a little, little more insight in an email that I sent you guys. Um. He, he has multiple properties. There is a medical hardship. And he's actually asking for an exemption on all of his properties. Um, a minimum of sixty days, and including the one that you guys granted the thirty day on last, last week. Is asking for um sixty days. And my understanding, I have seen some of this myself, um, there has been progress made on his properties. Um, he's been getting help from people where he can, different family members. Um. So. Any, any other questions I can maybe can answer? Yeah, that's one of his. But yeah, he's asking for a minimum of sixty days due to medical.
Well, there are some technical issues going on here, and I certainly. Feel for his situation as far as the health goes and. Um, situation with family members and such, so I. We already granted thirty days?
On one of the properties.
Yeah.
Here's the one with the storage. Driver.
Yeah, with the camper, yeah, the, 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 yeah, the camper that was the nuisance itself.
So he's asking for a fifty day extension?
Yes.
The which is on the board?
Well, he's asking for not, no, no less than a sixty. But Francis asked for a ninety day extension, so we could have enough time to get properties cleaned up.
Okay. That was important.
That's what's in the email from the granddaughter.
Excuse me, yes, I apologize.
So they want a ninety day extension.
Again. I liked our thirty days with coming back. Because I feel like when you stretch things out. It's kinda like. We don't go anywhere, we don't go anywhere, and oh, now we're coming down to the end of our ninety days, and let's see what we can get done. Type of thing.
Is it up to us to grant another thirty days if we see improvement?
I would, I wouldn't see why.
We could extend that, correct?
Uh, to the best of my knowledge.
That's how we approach.
So I would approach it that way, to say, you know what, we'll extend you a thirty day extension, but we need to see improvement.
Okay, so basically, I need to be following.
That's the suggestion, by the way.
Okay, alright. I, I know we're not gonna.
All four of the properties?
Yes.
I would say yes.
Yes. So we'll, yeah, include all four of the properties.
Okay.
For a thirty day.
Yes, there's one also, but still waiting for trusses and the roof, um, the burnout, that won't happen, but. They're cleaning up the property.
I, I think, again, I need to see improvement.
So how do we, how do we see improvement in thirty days? What's the measure?
We would have to be out there documenting with photos um. To look to see.
Okay, I'm just saying, you know, we say we wanna see progress, and if we don't know what the benchmark is, or the.
Well, we'll start with their baseline photos. And then I guess follow them up with.
I guess thirty days.
In thirty days.
So, well, hopefully, we can make it out there tomorrow or for Thursday. And to do additional pictures, so we can.
Let's just go with even the benchmark photos of what you took, and let's.
Okay, so you those questions?
So you could get there within the next twenty to thirty days and see.
And then again, they need to follow this up with an email. If they feel they need another extension.
Okay. And then Dan Freeze. He's also, that was the gentleman who doesn't live at the property, and his son does. And um. He's doing what he can, but it doesn't sound like he is a resident there. And he, he sent you an email also.
Right.
But he says his son lives there?
Yes.
So to me, that tells me there could be room for improvement.
Well, there's gonna be one.
But if there's a son that lives there, then. There's somebody there on the property that can be working with it.
Yes.
And their timeframe is up when, is that their timeframe actually up? In two days?
Everyone's up June, uh, June first. And that's another reason we have to get out there and and maybe mark stuff off.
So we know that is, they made the effort to apply for it.
Right, yes.
The other ones have not.
Correct.
So I would grant him the same thirty day extension with.
Yep.
I'll make that motion.
Did we have to do a most, did you do one for um Marshall too?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, okay, I'd make a motion, motion for both Marshall and Freeze. That their properties are granted a thirty day extension, they have to see improvement, and they have to re. File, and. They need more time. But if they don't have improvement, they get more time.
Okay, um. I don't know if you guys wanna look, um, see if any of those proprietors are on, I didn't know if maybe Mr. Freeze would be jumping in. Okay.
Well, second that.
Most of the second to give a thirty day extension and presented with improvement, although the favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, nay? Motion carried. Um. Did that include Mr. Hartman, or does that separate?
Yes, Hartman was table. Continued the table.
That's right. Sorry.
Okay.
Okay.
I think we covered my list. Thank you.
Appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Yeah.
Um, do you know if Elizabeth is coming or Sheila on the road?
Please, alright, thank you. Our way. Now, so what's happening?
Are you in a hurry, Todd? Of course.
Nothing else to do.
He posted, say yes.
You wanna talk about boards and commissions and stuff?
I have nothing to report.
The RPA, we did approve a project to help Cascade get their stuff done, but uh. I just wanna throw a shout out to the nice um. Event that was down at the Welcome Center, we went out on Saturday to the uh. Welcome Center opening down there in uh. Uh, Seviula, that was a beautiful facility, it was well attended. I think it'll be a night there. A nice addition. This would be a little with the Welcome Center.
I agree.
Transitioning to.
Win-win for all of us.
Win-win, and actually looking at our old Welcome Center, um, they've done quite a bit of work, it's actually looking quite nice there, so. I think it's gonna be a win-win, and they were actually designated in Iowa Welcome Center, not just Jackson County. So they have dual service, so they will get DOT signage. And stuff kind of pointing. To the location, it was a fabulous building.
Yeah, they've really done a lot of work to that down there, to that uh. Harbor. So, anyway, on our schedule, on our agenda, is Elizabeth Townsend, our Jackson County Yolk Administrator. Good morning.
Morning.
What's that?
Yay, warm paper.
And I apologize for anyone that's waiting for the work session, we are running a little bit behind.
Okay, so we had our border health meeting last week, um, I did provide for you in that package just a. Draft copy of the minutes, um. They're a little different than previous notes, because I've actually had Ruth Eldridge do them for me. Um, she's been doing some work for. My office. Um, okay, so annual pumper inspections, um, all of our pumpers passed inspection, I don't know if you remember, but. Some of them were not really in compliance, so I did get them. Um, up into compliance. Um, since meeting with them, and they're all on frac, so things are good there. Um, we, I think you all know that Larry Young passed away, so. We're down on pumpers, but we do have another guy. That's just recently purchased a truck, and he'll start pumping on. On the western side of the county, starting in July, so that's good. Um, Grant County, so we spent all of our Grant County money that we had budgeted, um, we do have a hundred bottles left for testing until July first. When our grant year will cycle out again. Um, and the assistant, um, Ruth Eldridge, as I mentioned, the zoning office, she is doing some clerical duties. Um, for me, just because it's a pretty busy time of year, and so she's keeping things going. Um. And then with the passing of Larry Young, um, we were down on time of transfer inspectors. So I went out and got that certification through the DNR. Um it's not abnormal for a sanitaryant to have that certification. All it does is allow me to do a inspection um on a home for a sale. So anytime a properties exchanging hands to a new owner, I would do that.
So you need to coordinate the pumping and then with the with the contractor and then you need to be out there and inspect it.
Yep, so um yep, and the board of health approved two different fees for that, so it would be five hundred dollar fee for me to do the inspection if the tank does not need to be pumped. The only time it wouldn't need to be pumped is if there was, it had been pumped in the last couple of years and there's a note from the pumper saying that the tank was in good condition and functioning. So. Um if I do have to coordinate with the pumper, then it's a six dollar fee. So there would be an extra.
So normally there's, I I thought I seen a four hundred dollar number at one time, was that?
It is, yep, so my proposal was four hundred, but the board health decided that they felt five hundred and sixty would work.
So potential revenue also. And there is, that's by law a two year, correct?
Yes.
A two or three year.
Yeah, so they're good for two years for the inspection.
Okay.
I didn't have one call already from somebody that wasn't had let their time of transfer um certification lapse and they asked me to come and do the inspection, so I do have one on the schedule to do. Uh soil testing, so we've had quite a few soil test requests since um we started that program. Um it's working pretty good so far. Um we've had a lot more contractors interested in having us do it than I anticipated, even with the fee that we set it at. Um right now, I'm working on gathering all of the well information for dresslers. Um I thought that that project has started before I came on board. I thought that all the information was put together, but I cannot find it anywhere. Um so what's happening is right now they're putting um people are bidding on the project and I'm getting calls from plumbers, uh well contractors that are um wanting to know how deep the wells are, how deep the casing is, da 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 da. So I have to pull all that information and get it together um so that they can put a proper bid on that. So I'm gonna be working on that this week. Um we do not have well records for every one of those wells.
So um I see potential. So when you ca- when you case or cap them or case them or or plug them, I should say. Do they have to be pulled?
Yeah, so you're supposed to pull the casing and so we've got a few of them in basements. So the question was, can they be plugged not to code? I don't know the answer to that, so I've reached out to um the head of the private well program with the DNR, Eric Day, to see if what the possibilities would be in order to plug those properly without letting them sit in basement. The problem is, is that there could be potential issues that they, if they do try to put the casing do certain things, so I'm trying to get some guidance and to give them information on what to, how to handle that. And then the other question they thought about was um you know, oh, well, there's a line item to make repairs to people's properties once wells are plugged. But the big argument is there's a lot of decorative concrete and how do we avoid that? So they wanted to know if they could not plug to code to in order to save, you know, people's decorative concrete. And I said absolutely not, you'd have to plug it to code, you know, this the purpose is, is for the contamination aspect to protect that, not to save people's decorative concrete. So unfortunately, that's just gonna be something that's.
Well, there's gonna be a few situations here, but the whole purpose of it is to better the community, so that's what we're doing.
Yep.
And we'll have to do it the way it should be done.
Yep.
Thank you.
Um let's see, I'm working on a few failing septic systems in the county that came to my attention. Um they are um I guess septic that people, they can't afford to put the replace their system, so I'm working with them on the state revolving fund. So that's funding that the DNR um and the state has out there to do low interest loans for anybody that needs a replacement of a septic system. Uh so yeah, I attended the DNR field office meeting for region one last week. Um one of the big things that they're wanting us to do moving forward, not immediately, but I see it happening in the next year where they're gonna require it um for PFOS testing. So that's the forever chemical. If you worry about it, I did put some information in the folder for you on that. It's it's basically chemical that leaches from plastic and it's in our water. And we are on the Mississippi River and so we are um more at risk for it. So I see the potential that we'll be forced into doing a study for the DNR on this. I have done one PFOS test. Um we had a homeowner want that test completed. It's a very complicated test. It's a very expensive test. Around three hundred dollars, three hundred fifty dollars for it. It is covered by Grant State County with prior permission um from the state. So if we identify an area that we feel needs to be tested, we can get that done through Grant State Counties. Um additionally, they are wanting us to um increase our testing for arsenic. So we'll be working on that with Grant State Counties as well. Uh let's see here. Um right now, Ruth Eldridge is working on improving our rabies quarantine and exposure notifications. I've just been using the ones that we got or that were here when I first started. So we've looked at a couple other counties to see what they had and she's making everything PDF billable and a little bit quicker. So that's nice, something that we're working on with that. Um and then tomorrow we have an IRS meeting. If you get nine, Lynn and I will be there. Um so one of the topics of conversation is resolution one hundred. I provided a copy of that resolution for you in your packet. Um. Basically, we're currently reviewing the resolution. Um I may come back to the support for an amendment on it. Um there's a lot of question about the grinders over in Leisure Lake. And how they can be used. Um right now, they're requiring each hookup on each property would have to have a separate separate grinder. So if you have a garage with a toilet in it and you've got your house, you have to have two separate grinders. So. We had a conversation with Mark Jobson and the attorney and the zoning office and Lynn and myself and just kinda talked about how we how it's not really functional. Um we are the ones that are supposed to enforce this for IRS and it's just really not enforceable the way the resolution is written. Um so my proposal is gonna be um that we could would allow to three hookups per property. So instead of having three grinders on a property, they they can hook up to the one grinder that they would have. Um that's just what I'm gonna propose. We are gonna discuss it with at the IRS meeting tomorrow to see if I don't think that they would allow. They say that this resolution is ours. However, I believe it was a template at some point that came to us and we were asked to sign it. We don't really know the history, but it's pretty complicated how they have it written now.
Yeah, definitely probably need some update and I can't see the situation where it would be different if you use a facility in the graduate facility in the house. That's still a thing.
Right, it's not adding bedrooms and I kinda like it to align with, you know, what we do in the county instead of craziness here, but what we can do, I may come back with something for you guys. Um let's see, and then the zoning office and I are working um on improving our processes for new builds in the county and not just new builds, but any anything where the two of us would be working together. Um Ruth has helped with that significantly. We've got a lot of spreadsheets going and it is extra steps and extra work. Um but I would say, I think it's been over a decade at least since these two departments have been working together on you know, any builds in the county to make sure that things are done appropriately. Um I will say that just since we've done this, we've caught things that maybe we would not have noticed before, things sliding under the radar, so it's good, but it's still extra work, so we are gonna be looking for software options just to cut back on some of the clerical work because there's a lot of quadruple steps of things, you know, entering information in and it's just.
We've talked about this for years, you know, that then we can get wait to stay for more than a year with get something completed that uh, you know, that would tie more offices together.
Yeah.
Could click of a button, could look it up and.
Yeah, really just to be able to come up on property and see all the information on it would be ideal instead of, you know, keep entering the information in five from places and zoning office and everybody else and you gotta send somebody this and that. It just gets chaotic, so. Uh so we're we're gonna meet with somebody this week. Um and they're gonna go over um some software that they have, I guess, so we'll see. We've got a couple of them in mind, I think. We'll definitely come back to you guys.
Appreciate it.
You know it.
Yeah. We can, I can also, Lori said it though. That's all I have. And it's been busy, been really busy.
I know, maybe you talked briefly about this, I mean, very briefly, but the opioid settlement, just because I read that article in the Dubuque TH about uh and ultimately the supervisors are make the decision of where this funding um goes or is used for. And I know you had mentioned to me that you didn't really have.
So my role is sort of, I guess my title and um what my role is are two different things. So I have the title of the public health administrator, but I really don't do any oversight on the public health side of things. I'm primarily environmental health. Things get sent to me to go get put together for the meetings, but I'm basically the secretary to the board of health. Um so I don't get information other than, you know, a report every two months from people. I have no idea really what's going on with any of that. Um I don't know if it's Michelle Cullen that should be overseeing it. I've never even seen a copy of their contract. I think there's a lot of question on and I I think, you know, the board and I would go into these meetings and we just, the information comes and I mean, that's just how it's been since I've been there, but when I met with um Becky Noah and Shaq from the state, you know, the first time I was here, she's like, you know, you're just a sanitarian. You're not, but.
Okay.
So.
Well, I appreciate that and I know they've mentioned public health quite a bit in that and they discussed it between uh they have a lot more personnel per se that to discuss it and we're, and I don't know, we haven't seen anything as far as funding coming in yet, correct? I I don't know when it's even due.
We have received some funding already.
For the opioid?
Yes, but we have not received anything from the last five settlements that you know, we've applied for. I'm sure what they're doing is waiting to see what other entities signed on and then distributing the money amongst those that did sign.
Well, it's just conversation to be had, you know, but our input, you know, I mean, we're all gonna have some input about, you know, I'd like to see more education in the school systems or I I don't know, I guess.
Yeah, and I don't know, um like I said, I mean, I don't know how to, I guess, get a better handle on some of that. And I'm not even sure that our board does. So I don't know if it's, you know, I mean, I feel like maybe some of this should come to us sooner. Um instead of finding out after the fact, like, you know what I mean? Um so I don't know, and I'm happy to assist and.
I mean, I just get the emails that's from the settlement thing and I normally forward them.
Yeah, yeah.
But uh.
And I'm not even sure like Julie Byrne, I'm not even sure how she's.
And that's a coalition where that's that's not really tied to the county though, well, yeah, I know, yeah, I.
Yeah, I mean, it's a.
I mean, it was a grant that they obtained that basically is, yeah, that's her.
Whereas we're helping them. They needed a five oh one safety.
Right. Right, so that's a different entity, but. Okay, appreciate it. Yep. Keep up the good work. Alright, so we did have a brief uh section uh session on any table or any unfinished business or board or commission reports? Anything else before the board today?
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn, so we are gonna have a work session. Will we log back on? I'll be on for that, or how do you wanna do that? Um I I I don't know if we have somebody online that would like to participate in that work session, that's my question.
I would say that person that I see is not part of the work session.
Okay. Please so state if you are. If not, I got a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried.